So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is the regular city council meeting of Minutrista for April, August 7th, 2023. So first order of business, just a friendly reminder, please turn your cell phones on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome, everyone that's here and also in the future watching on YouTube. First, I'd like to start out with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and Kathleen Refkin is not able to join us this evening. And then we have staff members present. We have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fousky. And we have our director of public works. We have Gary Peters. And we have Ally Paul Fuze, our director of administration. And then we have Don Matzko, who is with us this evening. And I believe the last time, last meeting that you are here, Don is going to be leaving us for other ventures. And she is our city clerk. And sitting in this evening is Angie Bowle. She's learning the ropes to kind of fill in. Angie has been here at the city for a while, but she's just kind of filling in to help out this evening. And then to my right, we have our city administrator Jasper Krugel. And then we have Brian Grimm, our finance director, and then Sarah Kennedy. Sarah Sensala, who is with Kennedy and Graven, our city attorney, and then chief of police, Paul Falls. So thank you, everyone, for being here. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. There's a couple of items on the consent agenda that I will be pulling off at that time. Otherwise, we can approve the agenda as presented. I'll just pull those off when we get to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So Peter Vickery made that motion, and then Ann McGregor seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So our first order here on our agenda is a special presentation. We have Brian Gersich. Is that how you pronounce it?
Gersich.
Gersich. Okay. And he is the new, fairly new, Waconia school superintendent. So welcome, Mr. Gersich, and thank you for coming. It's always good to have contact and connections with our school districts.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and very members of the administrative team for having me here. I'm excited to be here. I am approaching, well, just past my first year anniversary of being the superintendent of District 110 Waconia Schools. And I'm super excited to be here. I feel very fortunate to have the position and to be in this community. Just briefly about myself, I actually started my career as an educator in Minutrista. I was a math teacher at the West Tonka High School. Left there in 2004. I showed up as a kid fresh out of school. And I left with my wife, who was a school psychologist in the West Tonka Public Schools. And we had a one and a half year old at the time. And now, 20 years later, we're coming back to the area. I've got a 20-year-old and a 17-year-old. And it's just kind of getting back to this area is truly a gift. I think the fact that we had such a positive experience here. And I moved to Mankato with my family in 2004 to start my career as a school administrator. Started as an assistant principal. I was a principal of the school where my son still attends right now, Mankato West. I spent 11 years there. I was a superintendent with Sir Henderson, which is where your city administrator and I first crossed paths. And when I did get the job here, I very much appreciate it. One of the first people that reached out and congratulated me was a friendly thanks. First time in front of the city council, but we had coffee shortly after I left. So it was fun to make those connections as well. But over the course of my career as, again, a superintendent, I actually left education for a while to be a banker. I was a business banker at US Bank at Mankato for a year. 2018 was my year of a banker. Your luck suggests it's an unorthodox move. It wasn't a good fit, but it was probably one of the best things I did with my career because I learned a lot about myself and what I enjoy doing, which has made me that much more passionate to be an educational leader. And it taught me a lot about the business community. And building some of those partnerships and connections between the schools and the business committee are things that are really important to me. And I feel like I have a new ability to connect, speak the language, and do things within the finance world that I didn't have before doing that. But I more recently was an assistant superintendent in District 191, Burns, Willigan, Savage, and then got the job again, very fortunate. And have had kind of this area, in this particular district, on my places I wanted to be for a long time. So again, certainly somewhat of a dream come true, and we'll look forward to it. Like I said, I have a son who still goes to high school. We'll wait for him to graduate so that we can relocate to the area. In the course of the year that I've been here, just, you know, one of the things I've really learned about our school district and our community is we have amazing teachers and staff, and we have quite the support from our school district and our community. And we have an amazing supportive community that comes through. One of the things about the staff that we have that's kind of unique compared to a lot of places I've worked is the high concentration of them that work in our district but also live there, send their children to our district. I think there's a different level of commitment when you've got to go to work to a place where it's your children, your neighbor's children, your friends' children that you're helping to connect with. And again, that level of investment isn't as common in a lot of the places that I've been. So it's super unique. And again, we have such a supportive community. They've been supportive financially. We have a lot of business partners that want to partner with our school district. So we get a lot of things that we have going for us. You know, over the course of the last year, we discovered one of our biggest opportunities was financial. And I think going into the position, I knew that was the case. And I think one of the reasons I probably got the position was my background and comfort in dealing with issues of school finances. But we came into a situation where it was about eight or nine of the last 10 years the districts had deficit spend. It ended up in what's called statutory operating debt. Statutory debt is a designation that not many districts in the state have. In fact, I think we're probably have the lowest fund balance of any district in the state of Minnesota. Out of 330-plus districts and chartering, I believe there's only five that are in statutory debts and were the only non-charter school, I believe, who still is in statutory debt. Statutory debt means you're 2.5% in the negative fund balance of your previous year's operating expenditures. Coming into this coming year, we will start at about minus 12% negative fund balance. So again, still some room to grow, but that was the big challenge coming in. And that was a huge part of our process of the last year. We set out to adjust our budget by 4.75 million. So that's about 9% of our fund that we were looking to reduce. The first 2.75 of that was to reduce just to break even. And the next 2 million was to start paying back some of that debt revenues over expenditures. Because for the sake of the community, this just isn't an acceptable place to be. We've been in statutory debt since 2018. And at the end of this year, we'll be about at the lowest fund balance that we've had. In other words, haven't really made a heck of a lot of progress, in spite of the fact that in that time, we've passed two operating referendums. One that the community and the voters passed in 2018, and another that was an operating referendum that was passed two years later in 2020. That second one passed with very slim margins. And just as somebody who's kind of read and researched, that one was probably statistically more likely to fail. Because when you go into statutory debt, a month or two, or announce your statutory debt, a month or two after you pass an operating referendum, to go back out and ask for additional resources is generally speaking not one that the taxpayers would normally receive, as if to say, prove to me what you've done with our resources already before asking for more. And I will say, as we've gone through a very difficult process to reduce our budget, that was one of the things that, you know, some members of the community had voiced, should we go back to the voters for additional resources? And my comment to the board, and I kind of, you know, made it graphical and I kind of explained it in a timeline, but generally speaking, we can't spend our way out of debt. And right now, I don't believe is the timing to go back and ask a generous community for additional resources until we've done this process. So in other words, I would never say we shouldn't go back to ask the taxpayers for additional resources, but this wouldn't be the time to do it. We do need to tighten up our belt, live within our means. And again, in this particular situation, again, you can't spend your way out of debt. We need to make some reductions in staffing and, again, do a lot of things. And I would say this, one of the things I'm really proud of is the fact that we did adjust our budget by 4.75 million. It's probably closer to 4.6, but we're still kind of netting that out. And we did not raise our elementary class sizes. And we did not reduce any of the opportunities for our kids, like extracurriculars or things outside of the classroom or programs. If you had said we were going to be able to reduce our budget by 9%, not impact those things, I wouldn't have thought it was possible. And I do believe that we came out of that protecting those class sizes for our youngest learners. I told a lot of people in our community that budget is the biggest problem, that I think we have a pretty remarkable district. Because I would see that as a very solvable problem compared to some other districts' issues, like if the community didn't trust our teachers, or if we didn't feel like we were providing a quality education. Those are some things that take a long time to shift and to adjust within a culture. Whereas the financial, you know, it's a big task, but it is something that I would say we can lean into our strengths when we fix some of our budgetary issues. As far as the going forward, my hope is certainly we're in what we call the implementation and refinement stages. We've got to make sure that we hold and actually get results. It's one thing to go and say we're going to reduce our budget and to put money back in. It's another to actually see those results and to make sure that we net that out, because we've made some promises. And myself and my business manager are certainly expecting to maintain and honor those commitments to the community to move us in the right direction. The other thing, though, we want to focus on is kind of revisiting our strategic priorities and our plans, and namely, making sure that we take a look at our educational outcomes. Again, I think we're providing a high-quality education. We're in a neighborhood where the bar is not, you know, good. The bar is great. And we expect in our community that we're going to be among the best districts in the state for a lot of years to come, which doesn't mean we've got something broke, but it means we've got to run a little faster and aim a little higher, because that's where we want to, that's the bar we want to live up to. I do realize that, you know, the city of Minutrista has a kind of a smaller portion of our school population, but certainly it's an important part that, you know, I be here. And again, a big part of this is to make sure I offer myself as a partner for you or for the community. If there are questions you ever have as a council, I'm happy to come back and ask those or now, or if people just want to have coffee and just talk. I certainly want to be a partner and be a part of the community. And again, I'm just so excited to be here. This is exciting, exciting to be here and to be back in Minutrista. So thanks for the opportunity. I didn't have a real long presentation, but hopefully that was an okay use of time.
That was an okay use of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And council, do you have any questions? I always say it's good to have partnerships and it's good to get to know people. And a strong community consists of many good organizations, and strong communities also consist of strong and good schools. So we know that, and we appreciate all of our school districts within our boundaries here. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you come again sometime in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are you related to the Gersich hockey player?
Yes, but like, I've never met them. But my dad would be able to show you exactly where in the tree. But if there's the last name Gersich, there's a really good chance we're.
They play hockey.
Yeah. They'll play hockey and are related. My dad likes to tell us.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda items. I'm going to take off and remove consent agenda item E and I. E, we will bring back at our next meeting. And I, we're going to remove for now. And I also want to take off the work session meeting minutes, just for a brief discussion, a couple of minor tweaks to those minutes. So are there any other items you wish to remove? All right. So that will then, we will, the consent agenda items consist of B, approving our city council regular meeting minutes from July 17th, 2023. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to award the contract for the SUNRAM construction for site work at the Gene Lanier Park. F is approve utility and access easement agreement with MI Homes. G is accept completion of the MIDCO broadband expansion project and authorized payment to MIDCO. And H is accept the resignation. Okay, I want to remove H, too. We're not going to accept it. This is accept the resignation for Don Matzko, our city clerk, effective August 10th, 2023. And Don, I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for being our city clerk and prior to that, our billings, in our billing department. And you've been a fantastic employee. We're sorry to see you go. We know that you have a wonderful venture ahead of you, and we wish you the very best of luck. So with that, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items? Let's see, B, C, D, F, G, and H. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Just want to make a few clarifications on the work session meeting minutes. You will find this on page three in your packet. It's the last paragraph in item number two. And it says, "Council discussed the maintenance responsibility of the four boulevards and irrigation in the future. Council requested staff to bring a plan with cost for city staff to remove the current trees from the neighborhood and a maintenance agreement for the future." So I think it should read, we discussed staff to remove the current trees from the four boulevards and put an HOA maintenance agreement in place for future tree maintenance for all boulevard trees in the neighborhood. Because we're not removing all the trees in the neighborhood. Okay, so it should just read, city staff to remove the four boulevard, or remove the trees from the four boulevards and put a HOA maintenance agreement in place for future tree maintenance for all boulevard trees in the neighborhood.
Can you say center islands?
Yeah.
Instead of boulevard?
Okay.
Make it more specific to that.
Okay, I thought the boulevards.
To remove on the center islands.
Thank you. Center islands, and then for future center island and boulevard. Thank you, Gary. All right. With that, that was the only change I had. So is there, is that okay with the council?
Sure.
All right. Is there a motion then to approve the minutes with those changes? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our business items. This is approve our labor agreements?
That is me. One thing I will note, persons to be heard.
Well, there was nobody signed up.
Okay.
So I didn't gloss over it, but there was nobody signed up. Did you want to say something?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
Did you want to sign up?
I did not.
All right. Go ahead.
All right. So tonight, we have three labor agreements in front of you for consideration. The first one we're evaluating is the IUOE Local 49 Group, which is our public works group. And that, that consists of everybody that does the street maintenance and the sanitary sewer, stormwater, and water here. Give me one second while I pull this up quickly. Essentially, and you'll see this in all three of the agreements, there isn't much, you know, filler things that were changed, really, which I appreciate, and I think the group appreciates that work with each other, is we really focused in on the compensation piece and making sure that we were in the market compared to other comparable cities. So the IUOE group, I'll use a lot of acronyms here. In summary, I'm still pulling this up quickly. In summary, the changes that you'll see, there's just some, some basic contract language changes with the term, the AFL-CIO reference, which is an old reference to another union group that has been removed. That's something that hasn't been actually relevant for a couple iterations. So that's been removed throughout there. There's been some grammatical updates just as we reviewed the contract. Changes in the contract due to the public works superintendent being promoted to public works director. So those are changed throughout there. Article 11.2, we added sewer collection system to that, so that that's now part of that job description for that group. Now, a little bit of financial piece here. Article 20.1, the family insurance employee contribution, or employer contribution, sorry, there's a typo there, increases from $1,300 to $1,500 per month. And that's the cafeteria piece, and that's for 2024. So currently, we're at $1,300 if you elect family medical coverage. Due to the cost increases that we're seeing there, what's built, been built into our non-union contract or our budget for non-union folks is 1,500. So we're making that relevant throughout all of, all of the contracts. You'll see that change in all three of the contracts that we're looking at tonight. 20.1, we're adding that Juneteenth holiday that was passed, legislatively passed this summer. So that's in there. So there will now be, now will be 12 holidays. And then we really focused in on putting the actual dates of the holidays in there because certain times, we have a holiday that falls on a weekend and we observe it versus the actual, and there's some time multipliers that are associated with that. So we just wanted to clarify that piece. Article 21.3 clarifies that triple time will only be paid on the actual holiday. So if we observe it, that's just time and a half on the actual holiday. So let's say Christmas is on a Sunday, and they come in on Sunday, the 25th, they would get triple time. If they come in on the 26th, the day that we're observing it, that would fall into the time and a half piece. So we just wanted to clarify that. There's a couple of questions that came up last year with that. 25.4, the superintendent was replaced with the director because of the promotion. Now, into the data for the compensation. So based on the market adjustments that we kind of indicated, and I know we shared that table with, with the group, we came to a 12.25% adjustment on January 1 of 2024, a 3.5 adjustment in 2025, and a 3.75 adjustment in 2026. So pretty heavy on the front end. That's that market adjustment with, with the cost of living adjustment as well. That gets us into the market for the area. And that's for the, that's for the public works maintenance workers. Appendix B, it's the same adjustments through, for appendix B and appendix C. Appendix B is for the utility operator group, and then appendix C is for the public works lead position, which is only one person. So, and then lastly, the footwear item D2, that amount was changed from $200 to $250 per year, or $600 to $750 for the term of the contract. So again, the major component that we had in here was the compensation piece and the market adjustment that we have in this. This went to the personnel committee. We presented it to them. We got some feedback. We went back to the union group. Union group has accepted those changes. So the contract that you see before you right now has been tentatively approved by the group. So tonight, we're looking for consideration from the full city council to enact this collective bargaining agreement for '24 through '26. So I will entertain any questions anybody may have.
I don't have any questions because I was on the personnel committee meeting.
I didn't notice anything on pensions or retirement plan contributions. Did I miss that, or is that kind of separate?
So that is separate. So that's built in through state statute that we have to contribute a certain amount. So as their salary goes up, that percentage amount that the city has to contribute goes up, it remains the same, but the dollar amount goes up. And then the same goes for the employee contribution piece. So I think that's, is it seven and a half?
Yeah. For public works and for non-police, I guess basically it's six and a half employee contribution, seven and a half employer contribution.
And was that factored in our budget discussion earlier?
Yes. Yeah, that's all for all the spreadsheets and stuff. It flows all the way through that.
Yeah. So we have para, and we have FICA that we have to contribute to. And then what was the, there's one more piece, or is it just para and FICA? Para and FICA.
And then just the medical insurance contribution.
So yeah, for the budget conversations, it's kind of is linked to what we had for the 2024. All of those contributions, it's the total compensation package cost is included in the 2024 proposed budget.
And the nice thing is the PERA hasn't gone up for a few years. For a while, they were having to adjust the employer contribution to make the, obviously their actuarials and their whatever, you know, calculations. So, but they've kept that pretty, even the police one, they've kept pretty flat for a few years now.
You have to make sure that it's solvent.
Solvent, yeah, yeah.
Claudia or Peter, more questions?
Was there a change in the severance payments? I didn't.
There was not. So that remained the same for the union contract from the previous contract to this one. And it also is the same for non-union folks, which is in our personnel policy. So there have been no changes to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. So if you have no other questions, then are you in agreement? And are you interested in resolving this or solving? So I'm looking for a motion to approve the labor agreement between the city of Minutrista and the IUOE Local 49 for '24 through '26. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia, Ms. Lacy, sorry. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We have another labor agreement. And I have to say, I want to thank both of you, Ally and Jasper. They spent a lot of time on this. And as you, maybe you guys don't know this, but before, these used to come to us in December. So I mean, seriously, sometimes not until January. So they were able to get this accomplished. Now, this is, this is great. It also helps for our budgeting. And so, good job. And I know, Brian, you were involved in that as well. So I want to thank all three of you for, for your efforts on this, and I think it, it will pay off. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next one, we have the LELS, the local, our law enforcement labor services, Local Number 116. So that group is our patrol officers. So it consists of the, kind of the daily workers that we have, the daily police officers. Again, very similar to the IUOE contract, where there isn't much changing in the actual body, but really focused on the compensation piece. So I'll briefly go through this. Again, the contract period is for three years, 2024 through 2026. The family contribution for medical goes up, goes from $1,300 to $1,500 a month. We've added Juneteenth to the contract as well. And we did some contract modification, just to kind of clarify some things. The floating holiday was listed twice. I think we removed it from one section, so it's no longer redundant. We added some language in there to clarify what standby time is. So standby time is when the county puts an officer on standby for having to come in to a trial. So a lot of times, they'll say, you need to be in here, officer, so-and-so, at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday. Well, they'll put them on standby for a couple days, and they might be off duty, but then they have to remain in the area to possibly go into the trial. We have language in there saying that they'll be compensated at 50% of their normal wage. It was unclear because the county doesn't really do a good job of documenting when they're on standby and when they're not. So they get an email, but they might be on standby for a few days, and they don't actually get documentation showing that. So we're just clarifying that if they're on standby by the court, they will be compensated that, that 50% of their wage.
Can I go back to 13.1 just for a second?
Oh, yeah.
Just because from that previous one, so yeah, our single contribution in all the contracts, and you probably picked up his staying at 900 per month. And then, yeah, the families went 13 to 1500. So just want to make sure that was clear, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, good clarification.
I knew that, so I didn't ask the question.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So the single is, and we think the single is an adequate amount because it can cover, pretty much, you know, fully cover somebody's insurance if you're at singles. And then into the compensation adjustments. So the 116 group, what we're proposing is a 10% adjustment in 2024, a 5% adjustment in 2025, and a 4% adjustment in 2026. Also, the longevity table, so the last three steps of the, of the table that you'll see in the contract, those are not changing from the current 2023 model, but we're just extending that from a 4, 4, and 5 moving forward. So we're at a 4, 4, 5, so there's no change for 2023. We're just extending that back into 24, 25, and 26. And that's the, that's the major changes. That puts us competitive in our regional competitors. A lot of times, what I like to focus in, uh, South Lake Police Department, Orno Police Department, those are, I think, our major competitors.
Corcoran.
Corcoran, um, you know, we're right in the mix with all of those. So we're competitive, you know, I think this year was probably a more challenging year because Orno, um, had a contract year last year, so they're a little bit ahead of everybody by a couple dollars an hour. Now we're all caught up, we'll all be caught up pretty much together for the next two years. Um, Orno will have a contract year in twenty twenty-six, so they might pull ahead. You know, it's just that, that ebb and flow of these contracts as we go on. So we're competitive. I think, um, as Chief Falls mentioned, it's one of the best things we can do to retain and recruit our police officers is, is make sure that we're competitive in our wages. So I think that's a big component of this, this contract. And I, I think we're there. So with that, I'll entertain any questions on the, um, local one sixteen labor agreement with LELS.
Questions? Nope, all right. So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the, uh, labor agreement with the, um, LELS, uh, number one sixteen for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. And do you want separate motions or can we do it one motion?
For the?
For both.
One-one-six and?
Three-four-three.
Three-four-three?
Yes.
I'd do separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so first motion is for, um, approving the labor agreement for, um, union number one-one-six, LELS one-one-six, for twenty-four through twenty-six. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then, um, a motion to approve the labor agreement between the City of Minatrista and the law enforcement LELS, number three forty-three, for twenty-four through twenty-six. Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
If, if you want, there's a, there's a couple, I know you guys already took action on it and I know you're fine with it, but there's a couple little just differences between the two. The, it's ten point five percent for the, for them. So I can, it's ten point five percent, and we added some longevity, um, increases to the steps just to get into the market. Um, and the other language, there's promotion language that was added to this one to say that if there's like a patrol officer who gets promoted to a sergeant or sergeant who gets promoted to a lieutenant, um, there's going to be a minimum of a five percent, um, compensation adjustment. So we think that's fair. Yeah, we're doing that in practice already. It's just they wanted that clarified, I think. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody. But thank you for, uh, thank you for taking action quickly on that.
If there's not much difference. I go over it again. All right, all right, that concludes our business items. So we'll move on to administrative items. We have, um, Chief Falls, you wanted to give us a report?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Just a quick report on National Night Out, which was last Tuesday night. The weather, as you probably know, was, was absolutely beautiful, so it was very, very well attended. Uh, Mayor Whalen and I actually made it to six different parties this year, which I think is our record, so.
Close to it.
We managed our time pretty well this year.
I had to stop him from talking.
Get carried away sometimes. But staff enjoyed this. This is just a great event to get out there and, and have positive contacts with, uh, our residents, uh, which is kind of different than, than our everyday role. So that's really a, a good thing for our staff to be involved in. They all enjoyed it very much. Uh, and, uh, so it was very successful. So one of probably our best years yet, as far as attendance goes. So each year, the number of parties seems to creep up. I think we were at eighteen or nineteen this year. So it is a challenge to get to them all, but we, uh, we did meet that challenge, so that, that's good. Uh, and then I think I, the only other thing I have is, uh, our CSO that has worked for us for a little over a year, um, or about a year, recently graduated from skills, took his post-test. And so he is, uh, now licensed. He started his first day as a police officer for us last Friday. So we're excited to get him all trained in and, and ready to go on his own. And his swearing-in, I should mention, is next, will be at our next meeting on August twenty-first, I believe it is.
Good. We'll be happy to do that. That's exciting. And I will say, National Night Out, um, everybody, they're so excited to see the police, the police officers and, and they, you know, just were so excited to see them and of course wanting, saying thank you for their service to our community. So, um, they do have, I think, a good reputation in our community. So thank you, Paul, and to your entire staff for doing the National Night Out, but also for your service. So thank you very much. Thank you. Any other staff reports? City engineer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I might take a couple minutes just to provide a quick update to the council about the projects from this year. First, the Millin Overlake project paving's been complete. We do see some of the restoration areas are a little patchy. It's been a tough spring, or it's tough summer to get, uh, to get grass seed to grow. So any, any areas that are still patchy when we go through that inspection, we'll be putting on the contractor's list of the items to take care of. So, um, we'll still be getting some miscellaneous items complete with that project. Uh, the reclamation project, I haven't been up there, but, uh, the inspector indicated that North Arm got the last, um, layer of pavement. And he said it is very nicely done. He said that there's no joints in it. They, um, they did it continuous feed through there. So, um, they'll be working on, doing some shoulder work here, um, before they wrap that project up. But we're certainly, um, getting to the finish line on those two projects. For the water main and street reconstruction project, they'll be, the contractor will be finishing water main installation in, um, it's one of the, it's actually the smallest phase. It's the Morning View Court area and the section of Morning View Drive that extends just east of Morning View Court. They'll be finishing that up. And then as they start preparing the roadway for paving, it, the crews will be kind of, I call it flip-flopping, but they'll be moving from one area to another day-to-day. And the reason being is we want to limit disruption to the neighbors that it, we're not restricting their access for two days in a row. And so we'll be communicating with them through door hangers, making sure that they know what's, what's going on with the project, amping up that communication. But that's the reason why you're, you see them moving, um, from one area of the, the project phase to another just to, to keep people from, you know, you, you don't want to have them two days in a row where they can't access their homes, so. But they are moving along with that. You know, we, we talked a little bit about, do we want to slow them down on that? And, and my, my direction on that was to keep going because we certainly don't want to lose out of weather. We've had a good construction season so far, but, um, you know, it's, it's August. We need to keep that project moving.
Absolutely, yes. We do not want to be paving in November.
No, we do not. That's all I have for council.
How, how is the communication part piece going? Do you, can you tell, are people happy? I mean, have you had a lot of problems or?
We had a little bit of a hiccup where, uh, there was a handful of email addresses where folks had provided at the outset of the project when we first started talking, um, you know, feasibility stage. Um, so we got those folks in on the, the email distribution list. We talked to them personally. But we're seeing, I don't have the statistics on the volume, um, of emails or calls coming into that hotline, but they are certainly utilizing it. We still get, um, as from a staff perspective, we do get some, some phone calls and emails still just because our names and numbers and emails have been out there throughout the project, and that's okay. But, uh, you know, I think with, with the exception of a few hiccups, um, you know, communication's going well.
Okay, good, all right. Any other staff reports? Hearing none, um, I'll start with the council reports. So, um, as I'm, um, as the chief mentioned, I was out with him on National Night Out. And besides the other things I mentioned, I want to say it was really interesting because I was able to go to, we went to Jennings Cove neighborhood and to Painters Creek neighborhood, or sunny, yeah, Painters Creek. And both of those have new playgrounds and new parks, and it was really nice to see that. And people were so appreciative and they really liked that. They, they were just like, oh, you know, I mean, and it was great. And the playground, they looked great, Gary. I mean, good job. It, it was really nice to see that. And so we're, we are looking forward to the Gene Lanier Park. So once that's up and running, we'll have to do a, maybe a ribbon cutting or something out there because that's kind of a special one. Um, I also went to the groundbreaking for the Duran, um, new apartments. That was very hot. It was last week when it was like a hundred degrees and we were out in the middle of a gravel pit, so it was very hot. Very short, though, so that was very good. Very short speeches, and I made mine very short. But I did, um, want to, I did say thank you to not only the Duran Company, but the McIntune, um, family and group because of their collaboration on this project. But also, want to also mention our planning department because, and I did mention this at the groundbreaking, our planning department, along with Durans and the McIntunes, have done a phenomenal job of, um, maneuvering, if you will, uh, through this process. And it's coming to fruition. I think it's going to be a great, a great project, a great, um, development. And we're really looking forward to it. But, um, thank you to staff for, for all the work that they had to put into this as well. So with that, um, again, it was very hot and it was very short. But, um, also attended the personnel committee meeting and where we discuss these union contracts. And then also just want to continue to mention, we are going to have the holiday event. If you haven't already marked your, your calendar, we need people there, so please come. Everybody's invited, even the school superintendents from Maconia. And, uh, it's November thirtieth, again. We have a number of, um, sponsors. I want to say thank you to WSB and to Kennedy and Graven for their sponsorship. We have others also that are going to be sponsoring, that have committed to sponsorships. I won't mention their names until it's solidified, but we have quite, quite a few and quite a bit of monies, um, in sponsorship so far. So that's absolutely fantastic as well. We have, um, and the Lions, as I mentioned before, are going to be doing a wine and beer tent. So that'll hopefully be a nice attraction, but keep that in mind. This is a community event, um, a time where residents can come and interact not only with our public officials, but with neighbors as well. That's all I have. And I will attend the planning commission meeting if you need a planning, if you, we do have a planning commission meeting, I believe.
Correct, yeah, it's a pretty hefty agenda, too.
I'll, I, I will be there. All right, thank you.
Okay, um, Ghostwood Center is on, on hold. We won't be having any meetings until September. But behind the scenes, um, they're still looking for a marketing coordinator, but they think they may have an event planner. So, um, things are progressing and in the right direction.
Good, thank you.
Nothing on the Pioneer Sarah Creek related to Minatrista.
Okay.
Um, I attended the, um, open house put on by the Met Council. And I thought it'd be interesting. It's, the lift station is a mound, but across the street is Minatrista. And they have a project where they're trying to, it's a three-year project where they're, um, building a rain garden and, you know, it's kind of an environmental project. And I went because I've heard several complaints about the, the way it looks because it's very rustic looking and just kind of looks like, um, the Met Council property over on West Edge is not being cared for. But there's a plan, a three-year plan where they're trying to have indigenous plants grow and filter the rain. But to the residents, it just looks like they haven't mowed for three months and it's out of control. So we listened to the residents and we really had a wonderful, um, I mean, I felt like we were heard and they agreed to mow a foot along with the, an edge, a foot along the street instead of let the weeds grow around the street. Um, and then they asked for patience and to trust what they're doing. So I think it was a really good meeting and, um, the residents were happy knowing that at least the edge along the curb would be maintained, so.
You're talking about the facility on West Edge that?
Correct.
With the buildings that used to, yeah, they filled that in. Used to be a big pond.
Yeah, well, they're still.
There's still a pond there, but not as big.
Pond, yeah. But, uh, and then the, um, marketing pieces along the road were also incorrect. It looked like they were at the end of the three-year project, but they're really at the beginning. So they're asking for patience. So, uh, it was kind of fun. It was fun to chat with, uh, some Met Council people. It was a good outcome.
All right. All right, with that, then, we are done with our meeting. And if we, I have a motion to adjourn, we can be going home. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. And is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peter, Mr. Peters. Man, I'm getting your first names and last names all mixed up. Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye.